Good morning, everyone. The eighth regular session is now called to order. For our invocation, may we have Honorable Buntuyan.
Ladies and gentlemen, ahead. In prayer, Heavenly Father, we came before you today as we gather decision, receiving the bayan. We thank you for the gift of leadership and opportunity to serve our community. Gather our discussion and decisions with wisdom and integrity. May we work together in harmony, putting the needs of our constituents and the forefront of our minds. Grant us clarity, courage, and compassion as we address the challenges before us. This our effort of poster progress and unity to our beloved municipality and we actions reflect our commitments to our greater proud code. We ask your presence today and throughout our session. In your name we pray, amen.
Mga kababayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
For the recitation of Panunumpaan ng Katapatan sa Watawat, may we have Honorable Ante.
Fellow councilors, can you raise your right hands for the recitation of Panunumpaan sa Watawat ng Pilipinas? Ako ay Pilipino, buong katapatan na nunumpaan sa Watawat ng Pilipinas at sa bansang kanyang sinasagisag na may damal, katarungan, at kalayaan na pinakakilos ng sambayanang makadios, makatao, mga kilkasan, at mga bansa.
Kung iyan ang nasaan, to't ako, naglayang isang dugo ng pinipido. Iba't ibang vivo, pinag-galingan, lihan lang sa pataguyan, na matibay na mamamayan. Wala pumupu, na siya, ayaw na siya. Ang sanway na loya, di na lahat. Tayo lang, para di na tumpay. Sama-sama sa pataguyan na bayan, atin ang puti na magandang pinagmutasan. Tayo ay mangkaisa, sa hibigas at ipo, para sa bayan sa ato. Ayaw pang tahanan, ito'y sangyaya. Ikas na mayaman, napahinay masagana. Iyakugay ang bawa, tumikan ang tumpay. Sa lira patidhawa, kami kagapan. Wungulok tahanan, na kayamanan. Lalumpag yaman, ni kultura karanganan. Kawak kamay, pagtebay, ina'tin ka tumpulan. Ipakbuhi, di sisikas, sa buong sahayan. Wungulok tahanan, na manggagawa. Wungulok tahanan, na mangmabayani. Gustayin katutuma, at mga kisyalo. Labitbisik sa pagunlad ang siyang minimiti. Ipakbuhi, bawat ang kahit aso. Iwagay ba, ang ino. Ang ino ba, kawak kataba, itumpuhan. Wungulok tahanan, na kayamanan. Lalumpag yaman, ni kultura karanganan. Kawak kamay, pagtebay, ina'tin ka tumpulan. Ipakbuhi, di sisikas, sa buong sahayan. Ipakbuhi, di sisikas, sa buong sahayan.
For the recitation of the Councilor's Creed, may we have Honorable Costas.
To my fellow councillor, let's all rise our right hand and all together we will recite the Councillor's Creed. I am a Philippine councillor mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances that are down to the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service above self as the guiding principle of my official act and as I had the pathway of local legislations. May the Almighty guide my mind and heart and shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people. So help me God.
You may take your seats and secretariat, please call the roll.
Only councillor or business is absent, Madam Presiding.
Since we are in corral, we cannot proceed to our order of business.
For the reading and consideration of our previous minutes, our minutes has not yet been completed due to the holidays that we had last week. But we will be presenting the same by next regular session as well as the minutes of this morning session. For the privilege and our question hour, we have two members who have manifested the avail of the privilege hour. First is Councillor Falcon with regard to the resolution approved by this body authorizing the drone spraying of Dole Philippines Incorporated.
Honorable Falcon is recognized.
Madam Presiding, this representation has come to realize that the resolution we approved last session authorizing Dole Philippines Incorporated to conduct drone spraying in their pineapple plantation inadvertently failed to include one of the most vital conditions, which is the establishment of a buffer zone along residential areas. The matter was already fully discussed and approved in the committee level but was not reflected in the committee report. For this reason, this representation strongly manifest its inclusion in the conditions set forth therein and that the hazard zone conditions will have a retroactive effect dated August 19 and it also manifested that this concern be taken as one of the urgent measure in this morning session, so I move.
There's a motion, any second. It's being seconded unless there's some objections. The same is to be carried as one of our urgent matters later.
Next to avail is Councillor Lumayag with regard to the resolutions he authored, resolutions of commendation.
Thank you, Madam Presiding. Good morning to everyone. This is with regards to the two resolutions of commendation last two sessions ago. This representation is asking for the permission if we could award it today in this privilege hour. I believe the parents and the contestants are here, namely the family of Devine Gracia and Trazo. So, thank you, Madam Presiding.
Thank you. May we have Honorable Salada for the suspension of rules.
Thank you, Madam Presiding. I move for the suspension of our internal rules.
Lifted. Let's proceed.
For the first reading and the farewell of proposed measures of communications, number one, we have a resolution authored by Councillor Dave Amor congratulating and commending the teachers and education leaders of Polomolok for emerging as the overall champion in the 11th Division Research Congress held on August 8, 2025 at Paraizo Verde, City of Coronadal South Cotabato.
Urgent.
Next is calendar year 2025 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number One of Barangay Countryside.
We'll go to the Committee on Finance.
Items, items number one, two, three, four, and five are all resolutions of... one, two, three, three, are all resolutions of Barangay Palkan. First is Barangay Ordinance Number One, Series of 2025, entitled an ordinance prohibiting the use of motor vehicles with an open pipe muffler or those that are defective or have been modified which increase the sound emitted by motor vehicles and penalizing owners or drivers in Barangay Palkan, this municipality. And then an ordinance organizing the task force Kalinesan at Kayusan of the Barangay Palkan as a regular team in implementing the DILG Memo Circular Number 23-133 of Barcada, a weekly cleanup drive and circular number 2024-053, barangay road clearing operation or barco, an imposing penalties thereof, and an ordinance establishing an environmental fee system for the proper solid waste management in Barangay Palkan, Polomolok South Cotabato.
Number three item will go to transport. Number four will go to NVI. Number five will go to NVI and the Economic Enterprise. The leading, the lead committee is NVI. Next.
And last is capital, capi of trial balance of Special Education Fund as of July 31, 2025. For the committee reports, we have three committees which will render the, render its report this morning. And these are joint committees. First is from the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations and Committee on Barangay Affairs, subject calendar year 2025 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number One of Barangay Magsaysay, followed by the same committee as well as that of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. Subjects: Calendar year 2025 SK annual budget of Barangay Siloy 8 and calendar year 2025 SK supplemental budget number one of Barangay Rubber.
Honorable Overo.
Thank you, Madam Presiding. So this is the third joint committee reports from the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriation and Committee on Barangay Affairs. The subject of which is the calendar year 2025 Supplemental Budget Number One of Barangay Magsaysay, Polomolok South Cotabato. Facts and findings. The above measure was referred to the hearing committee for review and proper action on August 12, 2025. The joint committee held a meeting on August 21, 2025 at 10:30 a.m. in the morning at the SBCision Hall Espailliers building East Municipality for the consideration of the above mentioned measure and was attended by the joint committee members and barangay officials of barangay Magsaysay this municipality. Upon deliberation, the joint committee found the following facts: that the barangay concerned has a supplemental budget amounting to 3,676,322 pesos and 35 centavos, which was sourced from funds actually available, the surplus from 2024 with the amount of 3,676,322 pesos and 35 centavos. The aforementioned budget was appropriated as follows: object of expenditure MOE in the amount of 1,694,183 pesos and 95 centavos. Capital outlay: 637,138 pesos and 40 centavos. Program, project, and activities: 1,345,000 for a total of 3,676,322 pesos and 35 centavos. As explained by the barangay officials, the budget was made in order to fund the project that are relevant to the community. The supplemental annual investment program budget is amounting to 18 million 676,372 pesos and 35 centavos. The committee members also reminded the barangay officials to prioritize the passage of their 2026 General Fund annual budget before this year ends. The joint committee found that the proposed supplemental budget is improper hence the same was moved for each approval. Recommendation, with the foregoing consideration, the committee hereby recommends the following: to adopt this joint committee report to pass a resolution approving the calendar year 2025 supplemental budget number one amounting to 3,676,322 pesos and 35 centavos and to take the said resolution as urgent into decision. Prepared by Yarostoli as Chairman of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriation, concord by Honorable GCG Buntuyan, Chairperson Committee on Barangay Affairs, concord also by Honorable Calixto Bisalada Vice Chairperson Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriation, concord by Honorable Antonio B. Octavio Vice Chairperson Committee on Barangay Affairs, concord also by Honorable Joe R. Falcon and also by Honorable Jerome Ante and Honorable Bill Lbert Baitus as well as Honorable Dave Amor. So I move for the adoption of the committee report, Madam Presiding.
Unless there's a motion for interpolation, the same is carried. Good morning, everyone. For the fifth joint committee report from the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations, Committee on Youth and Sports Development. The subject is the calendar year 2025 Sangguniang Kabataan Annual Budget of Barangay Siloy 8. For the facts and findings, the above subject matter was referred to the here and undersigned Joint Committee for Review and Proper Action on June, on June 10, 2025 during the 141st Regular Session of the 19 Sangguniang Bayan. The municipal budget office has reviewed this SK budget and may be declared imperative upon approval by the Sangguniang Bayan. The joint committee held a meeting on August 20, 2025 at 11:30 in the morning at the session hall. at the Session Hall of the Sangguniang Bayan to consider the said budget and was attended by the joint committee members and the SK officials of barangay Silway 8, headed by Honorable Zinasly Zain Medrano. The committee recognized and appreciated the detailed and well-prepared budget of the SK Silway 8. However, they had, they identified a potential issue with the naming of one of the proposed programs, the Teenage Pregnancy Campaign. They suggested renaming it to Anti-Teenage Pregnancy Campaign to clearly reflect its true purpose. The committee also addressed the practice of compensating speakers, particularly, particularly those who are government employees with monetary honoraria. It was advised that instead of giving cash honoraria, the SK should provide tokens of appreciation such as plaques, certificates, or small gifts. The committee emphasized the importance of maintaining uniformity in the use of the SK official name in all documents, reports, and communications. The SK should decide on one official version of their name and use it consistently across all platforms and records to maintain professionalism, avoid confusion, and ensure clearly identity branding. Consistency is important, especially in formal documents partnership or when dealing with government agencies. The aforementioned SK budget with appropriations summaries below was reviewed and found to have complied with all the requirements provided by law. For the general administration program amounting to 798,042 pesos and 38 centavos, forgettable access to quality education amounting to 151,500 pesos, for health and sports development amounting to 140,500 pesos, for environmental protection, change, and adaptation, disaster risk reduction and resiliency in agriculture amounting to 80,000, for youth employment and livelihood amounting to 112,350 pesos, for gender sensitivity amounting to 10,245 pesos and 70 centavos, for capability building and leadership training amounting to 502,000 pesos, for agriculture amounting to 16,600, for anti-drug abuse amounting to 33,000, with a total expenditure program of 1,844,238 pesos and 8 centavos. For the recommendations, with the foregoing considerations and there have been no more discussions and our objections thereto, the joint committee agreed to recommend the following: First, to adopt this committee report; Second, to pass a resolution approving the calendar year 2025 Sangguniang Kabataan Annual Budget of barangay Silway 8; and third is to consider the said resolution as one of the urgent measures in today's session. Reported by yours truly, concord by Honorable Elizar Giovero, Honorable Calixto Bisalada, Honorable Ligaya R. Orbisido, Honorable Joe R. H. Falcon, Honorable Jerome Y. Ante, Honorable Billy Bert C. Bytus Jr., and Honorable M. Amor. So I move, Miss Presiding.
Unless there's an objection, the same is carried. Next.
For the sixth joint committee report from the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations, Committee on Youth and Sports Development, the subject is the calendar year 2025 Sangguniang Kabataan Supplemental Budget Number One of barangay rubber. For the facts and findings, the above subject matter was referred to the here and undersigned Joint Committee for Review and Proper Action on August 12, 2025, during the sixth Regular Session of the 20th Sangguniang Bayan. The joint committee held a meeting on August 20, 2025, at 11:30 a.m. at the SB Session Hall to discuss the budget. The meeting was attended by the joint committee members and the SK officials of barangay rubber, led by Honorable Christian Noel Solas. Upon deliberation, the joint committee found the following facts: That the barangay concerned has a supplemental budget number one of 516,494 pesos and 89 centavos, which was sourced from the current surplus unappropriated. And the aforementioned budget was appropriated as follow: For the general administration program amounting to 391,494 pesos and 89 centavos, for honorarium of speakers amounting to 8,000, for foodstuffs amounting to 30,000, for other supplies and materials expense 17,000, for training programs amounting to 70,000 with a total supplemental appropriation of 516,494 pesos and 89 centavos. In the discussion of the SK barangay rubber supplemental budget, it was reported that surplus funds from the 2020 to 2023 SK administration had been retrieved and will now be maximized for youth development programs. The committee noted that these funds were left unutilized by the previous administration, which was seen as missed opportunity, but nevertheless beneficial for the current term. SK rubber also acknowledged having 9,000 unutilized funds in 2024, but assured that the committee that succeeding funds will be fully maximized. It was further explained that SK finances are now under the direct management of the SK council rather than the barangay treasurer, enabling better control of their programs. The committee strongly advised the SK council to produce proper liquidations, maintain complete documentation, and safeguard receive to avoid accountability issues in the future. Members also emphasized the importance of including indigenous peoples' youth in the development plans and encouraged the SK officials to focus in building a legacy of good governance and demonstrating competency as new leaders. Recommendations, with the foregoing considerations, there have been no more discussions and our objections thereto, the joint committee agreed to recommend the following: First, to adopt this committee report; Second, to pass a resolution approving the calendar year 2025 Sangguniang Kabataan Supplemental Budget Number One of barangay rubber; and third is to consider the said resolution as one of the urgent measures in today's session. Reported by yours truly, concord by Honorable Elizar Giovero, Honorable Calixto Bisalada, Honorable Ligaya R. Orbisido, Honorable Joe R. H. Falcon, Honorable Jerome Y. Ante, Honorable Billy Bert C. Bytus, and Honorable Dave M. Amor. So I move, Miss Presiding.
Unless there's an objection, the same is carried.
The last report is from the Committee on Tourism, Culture, History, and Arts, subject a resolution in acting an ordinance declaring Polomolok Kenios as the official demonym for the people of Polomolok, South Cotabato, and mandating its use in official, cultural, and public communications, as well as the ordinance to the effect.
Good morning, Madam Presiding Officer and all the honorable colleagues in this plenary. On behalf of the Committee on Tourism, Culture, History, and Arts, I rise to deliver our second committee report regarding an ordinance declaring Polomolok Kenios as the official demonym for the people of Polomolok, South Cotabato, and mandating its use in official, cultural, and public communications. After thorough study and deliberation, here are the facts and findings. The above subject was referred to the Committee on Tourism, Culture, History, and Arts for its review and proper consultation with our stakeholders. On August 20, 2025, the Committee on Tourism, Culture, History, and Arts, together with other SB members, invited guests, and experts in linguistics, convened to discuss and clarify the use of Polomolok Kenios as the official demonym. The discussion focused particularly on the use of the letter "enye" as well as the definition and the usage of the term "demonym" in the context of the proposed ordinance. During the discussion in the previous regular session, it was suggested that the "enye" in Polomolok Kenios be substituted with "NIO" or "NYO" to make it sound more local and Filipino. To address this, the committee invited a linguist to provide a detailed explanation on the technical aspects of the term. The linguist emphasized that the word "demonym" and the use of the letter "enye" in Polomolok Kenios are linguistically accurate and consistent with orthographic standards. He further noted that this usage followed the rule of parallelism. It is recognized by the Komision Sa Wikang Filipino, or KWF, and is part of the modern Filipino alphabet. The "enye" continues to be used in proper nouns and loan words, particularly in demonym's. The linguist also explained that substituting "enye" with "NIO" or "NYO" is not attested in Philippine demonym's and would amount to an artificial creation without historical and linguistic precedent or precedent. Such alternatives would be grammatically awkward and linguistically baseless, even in academic and research perspective. Furthermore, the linguist cited that while Polomolok was not directly colonized by the Spaniards, many Spanish loan words remain in use in the Philippines, including in Mindanao. Examples include relo, mesa, and others, which were incorporated into Filipino grammar as early as the works of Lope K. Santos, regarded as the father of the Filipino grammar. That we recommend to adopt this committee report, to omit the phrase "Spanish-influenced regions" in the where-ask clause of the proposed ordinance to avoid confusion, and to consider the passage of the proposed resolution and ordinance declaring Polomolok Kenios as the official demonym for the people of Polomolok, South Cotabato, and mandating its use in official, cultural, and public communications as an urgent measure in this morning's session. Reported, yours truly, Councilor Dave Amor, the Chairperson Committee on Tourism, Culture, History, and Arts, concord by the Vice Chairperson himself, Councilor John Edward Lumayag, with the members, Councilor Jerome Ante, Councilor Angelique Dave Costas, and Councilor Joe R. Falcon, together with the SB members present during that committee meeting, Councilor Ligaya Orbisido and Councilor Antonio Octavio. Thank you, Madam Presiding.
And Honorable Salada is recognized?
Madam Presiding, I would like to ask the proponent, since this was a public hearing, I believe this is not only a committee meeting, but a public hearing. Did the committee invited the stakeholders like the Muslim brothers and sisters, the Blan, the Akadem of every institutions, the barangay officials, since our demonym will be used hanggang hanggang na, it will be a permanent call for our people of Polomolok.
Honorable Dave.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. As much as, 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 as much as my memory is concerned, we only tackled about the, um, if ang enye is grammatically correct. So ang gi-inviteran nato is the linguist. Para lang maconfirm nato, Madam Presiding Officer, kung tama bagyan siya and it's grammatically, grammatically correct. Because I know the fact kung enye ang isgutan nato during that committee hearing, I think our Muslim brothers and sisters and the rest of the invited cannot, um, um, relate to it. Since ang ato ang gi-clarify nalang mangyud, we, I think, is katong enye nalang in the usage of Polomolok Kenios. Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer.
Honorable Salada.
When we call for a public hearing, dapat all the stakeholders will be informed. But this will be used for the purpose of this, uh, uh, measure that we have to tackle.
Yes, so, Honorable Dave.
Kasi sa pagkakabasa ko sa RIP, since there are no penal provisions, I think hindi na rin namin inimbita 'yung iba pa nating mga kasamahan. Since, yun na nga po, 'yung pinag-usapan natin dito is just to clarify with the linguist kung tama nga ba na "NYO" or "NYO" 'yung ating gagamitin over that enye.
Honorable Salada.
Whether there is a penalty or not, basta public hearing, talagang lahat na stakeholders dapat may involve. Whether there is a penalty or not, pag sinabi mong public hearing. Pag committee meeting lang, okay lang yun. Uh, only a few will be invited. Kasi, eh, di, this involves the whole, uh, people of Polomolok in having a demonym.
So, any motion? Ah, okay, Honorable Dave.
Kasi sa pagka-clarify ko, we actually invited other stakeholders like, once again, ibita na mo balik ang tourism office and other youth sectors, but they didn't come. Pero niadto ang Committee on, ay ang Tourism Council. Pero sa pagkakaitin ko kasi last time, ibalik natin ito sa committee to clarify this matter regarding the enye and "NYO" and "NIO", and invite the linguists, not that Muslims and other, uh, identified one by the Honorable Salada.
So, uh... And, yes, Honorable Salada.
I would like to arrest by interpolation.
So unless there's an objection, the same, the motion is carried. So it's be taken as one of our urgent matters in today's session.
For the calendar of business and finish business nun, business for the day, second reading for urgent matters, we have six items considered urgent, first of which is the privileged speech of Councilor Falcon on the authorization for Dole Philippines to conduct drone spraying.
Honorable Falcon. Uh, Honorable Salada.
I would like to add inquiry, Madam Presiding. What, who is the leading committee of the drone spraying subject matter?
Uh, Honorable Bytus. But it was because I thought it was being manifested earlier by Honorable Falcon. So who among the two will have the revisions?
Madam Presiding.
Um, Honorable Salada is recognized?
I think the motion of Councilor Joe R. Falcon just to incorporate in the committee report, retroactive.
Um, actually, what Councilor Falcon manifested during the privileged hour is for the inclusion of, uh, buffer zone as one of the vital conditions in the approval for the conduct of aerial spraying. Because accordingly, that was thoroughly discussed during the committee report, during the committee level, in the committee level, but it was inadvertently, uh, it inadvertently forgotten, was sort of forgotten to be included in the, in the report. So Councilor Falcon is manifesting that the same, the buffer zone be included as one of the conditions and that it will have a retroactive effect, effective last, last sessions we had, Madam Presiding.
So we can have that later in the urgent matters instead. Uh, so, uh, who, who will move for the inclusion of one of the where assessed that the same should have a buffer zone? So I think, um, Honorable Falcon, I think is ready.
Madam Presiding, I move that the... What's her name?
The where assessed.
In the where assessed, that, that, um... That in the resolution that we approved last session authorizing Dole Philippines to conduct drone spraying in the, in their pineapple plantation, inadvertently failed to include one of the most vital conditions, which is the establishment of a buffer zone. So, I move to, uh, I move to include this in the committee report.
No, 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 not committee report, but resolution.
In the resolution.
Yes, yes.
With, with, with retroactive effect, uh, dated August 19.
Yes. There's a motion and seconded. Unless there's an objection, the same is carried. Next.
The next urgent is the resolution authored by Councilor Amor on the commendation of... The next urgent is the resolution authored by Councillor Amor on the commendation of teachers and education leaders of Pollo Moloc for emerging as the overall champion in the 11th Division Research Congress held on August 8, 2025 at Paraizo Verde, City of Coronadal, South Cotabato. The said Congress served as a platform for showcasing innovative research initiatives, best practices of teachers across the division, highlighting significant contributions in curriculum, instruction, assessment, child protection, and governance. The teachers and education leaders of Pollo Moloc excelled in both the oral presentation and poster presentation categories, garnering, garnering the following awards: Oral Presentation Category Champion Theme A, Maria Amihan Coronado, Pollo Moloc National High School Champion Theme II Child Protection, Jude Espina, De La Cruz Landon National High School Champion Theme IV Governance and Crosscutting, Tino Panduma, Panduma and Shilwin Kona, PPNHS. Second runner-up Theme 1B Learner's Assessment, Erhardi Pril Bonador Tejero and PJ Plises, Silway 8 National High School. Poster Presentation Category Champion Theme 1A Curriculum and Instruction, Maribel Inventado Ilyam and Diane Maria, Populacion of PPPNHS. Champion Theme II Child Protection Charity Antonio and Floribeth Nepomozino, Eustacio Barkatan Elementary School. First runner-up Theme 1B Learner's Assessment, Tino Panduma, Populacion National High School. Second runner-up Theme 1B Learner's Assessment, Pearl Pilapil, Pollo Moloc Central Elementary School. Second runner-up Theme IV Governance and Crosscutting, Jeff Bienbackchansila, PPNHS, Ace Toblasone Estrella Falden and Dr. Joseph Malida, Landon National High School. Through these multiple victories across diverse thematic areas, Team Pollo Moloc was declared as the overall champion in the 11th Division Research Congress, bringing pride and honor to the education community of Pollo Moloc. That's the resolution, Madam Presiding.
Honorable, Honorable Dave?
With that being said, Honorable Presiding Officer, I move for a resolution congratulating and commending the teachers and education leaders of Pollo Moloc for emerging as the overall champion in the 11th Division Research Congress held on August 8, 2025 at Paraizo Verde, City of Coronadal, South Cotabato.
There's a motion and seconded, unless there's an objection, the same is carried. Next?
Urgent number three, four, and five are the budgets as reported by the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations, Committee on Barangay Affairs, and Committee on Youth and Sports Development, Calendar Year 2025, General Fund Supplemental Budget Number One of Magseisai, and SK, Calendar Year 2025 Annual Budget of Silway 8, as well as that of Barangay Rubber.
Honorable Jovero?
Thank you again, Madam Presiding. So, I move now to pass a resolution declaring operational calendar year 2025 supplemental budget of Barangay Magseisai, Pollo Moloc, South Cotabato, amounting to 3,676,322 pesos and 35 centavos, as embodied in its appropriation ordinance number two, dated June 16, 2025.
There's a motion, any second. Motion is carried. Next?
Miss Presiding, I move for the approval of a resolution approving the calendar year 2025, Sangguni Ang Kabataan Annual Budget of Barangay Silway 8, Pollo Moloc, South Cotabato, amounting to 1,844,238 pesos and 8 centavos, authored by Honorable Elizard Giovero, co-authored by yours truly and cos-sponsors all committee members.
There's a motion, any second. The same is carried. Next?
Another, I move for the approval of a resolution approving the supplemental budget number one of Sangguni Ang Kabataan of Barangay Rubber, Pollo Moloc, South Cotabato, amounting to 516,494 pesos and 89 centavo, authored by Honorable Elizard Giovero, co-authored by yours truly and cos-sponsors all committee members.
This has been moved and seconded, the same is carried. Next?
The last report, the last urgent is the ordinance declaring Pollo Molocenos as the official demonym for the people of Pollo Moloc, South Cotabato, and mandating its use in official, cultural, and public communications.
I move to pass...
Open for deliberation first?
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. This is open for deliberation on its second reading on a resolution in acting on ordinance declaring Pollo Molocenos as the official demonym for the people of Pollo Moloc, South Cotabato, and mandating its use in official, cultural, and public communications. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Honorable Salada?
Thank you, Madam Presiding. In choosing demonym, it's not always the addition of suffixes like Ian, inyo, or inya, but also the internal change of the name of the place like General Santos, it's general, Sarangani, Sarangan, Thailand, Thai, because it also has truncation or cutting short. This, I believe, is better for, it will give uniqueness to our demonym instead of just adding a suffix, ninios. And Pollo Molocenos is a mouthful, it's long and bit tongue twister, Madam Presiding Officer. Bukid nun, they are not calling it Bukid nun ninios, they called it Bukid nun. So, Madam Presiding, I, I am a bit, do not agree in just adding ninios to Pollo Moloc, calling it Pollo Molocenos, we are just gaya-gaya, poto-maya.
Honorable Ante, where, where are you raising your hand earlier? Yes, so, I, I think I need to have a recess because Honorable Falcon is already at the table of Honorable Dave. Honorable Salada is recognized?
Thank you, Madam Presiding. I would like also to solicit the other opinions of our members. Hindi ko pwedeng soluhin lang ito, Madam Presiding.
Yes, Honorable Falcon?
Thank you, Madam Presiding. For me, because it is an ordinance, I would like to suggest to the proponent that it would go to a public hearing.
Another public hearing. Honorable Octavio?
Yes, Madam Chair?
The floor?
It is right, I think, to go back to the public hearing para makaano naman ta sa, besa may mga brighter mind paggy niya maka-suggest ba na other terms ang itawag sa taga-Pollo Moloc, no, kay, kabala man ta nga perma-mintin na maguna siya, ipi-ever, no, nga ma-approved na to na siya. So, para wala sang comment, at least, gin-public hearing na'ton, no, not only we are referring to the linguists, ano to, linguistics, na ano, mas naami ikisuro kong public hearing for the purpose na we are not be blamed, no, kay ginpaagita sa public hearing. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Salada is recognized?
Thank you, Madam Presiding. As citing section 54 of our internal rules, recommending a measure, when this angunian is not satisfied with the report of a particular committee, when a measure referred to it, the same may be recommitted or returned back to that committee for further study. So I move, Madam Presiding.
There's a motion, any second, unless there's an objection, the same is carried. Okay, let's proceed.
For the scheduled second reading of nun, third and final reading nun, and sign business nun, go now to the announcement.
Before the announcement of the members, may give the floor first to Ivy for, you have an announcement, Ivy, okay? From MCR, okay? Honorable Salada?
I move for the lifting of our internal rules to accommodate our visitor.
Ah, to suspend?
As if suspend our internal rules to accommodate Ma'am Ivy.
Okay, rule suspended.
For the lifting of our suspended rules.
So announcement, please stay after, we will discuss lang alit, asto sa adusay na'to. Yung adusay, yung awit, dula, at sayaw, oo.
Madam Chair, I suggest that the public hearing will be on Thursday.
Mag-invite ka pa kasi niyan?
Next week na lang daw, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay po, no ten? Okay, so, anymore? Meron pang iba? If wala, let's adjourn? Session adjourn at 10:07. For our closing prayer, may we have Honorable Lumayag?
In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Heavenly Father, as you come to this gathering in this session, we ask that you bless us with a good unity, help us to see past our differences, and embrace those that we are, thank you for bringing us together today. May the unity we have experienced continue to inspire and guide us in all that we do. May your holy name be praised.
Thank you, everyone. Asto adusay.